All right, we'll wait just a minute. Were you getting vacation this summer?
All right, I think we're ready to come back. I think Dan and Ms. Sharon are ready to go. And so we will move into our June 9th agenda of the State Board of Education. First of all, welcome. And we're going to begin this morning with a moment of silence and gratitude this morning, so join me, please. Thank you. We've already done quite a few recognitions this morning, but I do want to recognize one more before we move on. We have our incoming Teacher of the Year, Ms. Jessica Saum with us this morning. Stand up, Jessica. Welcome. And I am sure there are people around the room that are already looking at you this morning thinking, "How can I put her to work?" So we're glad you're here. So thank you for being with us this morning. We do have one change to the agenda I want to mention to you. Under the action items, the second one, the request for the waiver, Clark Colburn, that item has been pulled. So that item is no longer on the agenda. Are there any other changes to the agenda? Okay. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Does anyone have a question or a comment on the consent agenda? All right, so see, Ms. Freenow, did I need to do anything on the pulling of the item from the agenda? Is there any? Okay, all right. I don't want to get ahead of myself. All right. So we need a motion.
I'll move to approve.
Okay, hang on just a second. Ms. McFattress, are you on Zoom this morning?
Yes, yes, I am.
Okay, we just wanted to make sure before we moved on. Okay, thank you. Okay, so we're ready for a motion on consent agenda?
I will move to approve.
Okay, have a motion by Ms. Woods? Second by Dr. Hill. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Is there any new business this morning? Okay, so we're going to move on to our action agenda. The first item on our action agenda is consideration for requests for approval of nominated members to the PLSB Board. We have Ms. Saracini.
Good morning, Chair, Secretary Key, Board Members, Carly Saracini, Assistant Commissioner. This morning, I'm bringing to you three nominations for three members to continue for a second term on the Board. And just to give you a little background, these are three-year terms. I'm ready this time to answer some questions. Three-year terms. And they are representing, the first one is Dr. Donnie Lee from Harding University, and he's representing our higher education on our PLSB Board. He's been on there, and then he will just continue on a term. Would you like for me to go one at a time, or may I go all three?
You can go all three.
Okay. The second one is under the AAEA's umbrella, Ark Asfa is our HR Director, and Dr. Karen Lasker will continue her term. She is currently Personnel Director at Conway Public Schools. And then our third one this morning is Luann Baroni, and she represents through Arkansas Public School Resource Center our charter schools. And she is in administration there. And so those are our three that are returning to the Board for another three-year term.
Are there any questions or comments from Board members?
I have a question that came to mind. First, the reappointments, is there a limit on how many times they can be reappointed?
Currently, in our rules, no.
Okay. And then second, I know, not related to these individuals, but we have talked about at one point in time, the PLS Committee as a whole. Is that in legislation?
Yes, ma'am. It specifically says how many from each governing agency.
Okay.
Like so many teachers. So we have so many teachers from, that is recommended from AAEA, so many from ASTA, that organization, and then representation of administrators through the different organizations under AAEA, and then higher ed. And it's all very, so that one group, there's not more than one group, that's how it's laid out in legislation. And then I sit on that Board as a non-voting member, and then our Director of Lysenger.
Okay. I think at one point in time, we had a conversation about potentially adding a parent perspective or community perspective, and that would have to be gone through legislation.
Yes.
Though I know these people and others, so multiple hats in these roles. I was curious about that. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments from Board members? Okay, we're ready for a motion.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion from Mr. Sutton. Second by Ms. Dean. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next item is the Elder Rata School District 1240 waiver request, Dr. Pfeffer. And I know, Dr. Pfeffer, y'all have been doing a lot of work on these 1240 waivers behind the scenes and kind of streamlining the process, helping districts decide if they need a waiver or if they don't need a waiver. And so on behalf of the Board, I just want to say thank you. That has made it much better for us. And so we want to thank you for all the work that y'all are doing before you ever get here.
Well, it has been a good process. We've got several members of the team that are participating with that. I want to say, over the last month, we probably had about three districts that after we did a review and consultation with them, they pulled their waivers that they were going to bring because we were able to talk through different options with them, or at least go through and help them review their situation, and look at, you know, maybe something that we need to look at a little bit closer at a later time. But it's really been good for us, I think, as well. And I think it's helping us to provide more targeted support for districts. And so the district today that I'm introducing is the Elder Rata School District. And I believe Superintendent Tucker and Assistant Superintendent Melissa Powell are on the Zoom. And you may have some questions for them here in just a second, but I wanted to go through and give you all just a little bit of information around the recommendation that we would support the waiver request, which is to continue their current waivers of licensure for K-12 for three years. As we, when we first got their waiver request, we spent some time with them doing a licensure audit of their current teachers and the current situation. And what we found is, we went through, we were pleased to see that several of their teachers had now become fully licensed. They still have some that are not fully licensed, but the majority of those are either completing a program in a short time or are enrolled in a program. The challenge that they're finding is that there are several of them getting near the end of their program completion, and they still have parts of their licensure exams that they've not successfully passed. And as we really got to looking at those, several of those, we found were elementary teachers. And, you know, when I first saw that, I was concerned because I'm thinking, you know, having a large number of elementary teachers who are not fully licensed and are, you know, not able, even after going through their preparation program, that's concerning. But as we got to looking at some of the specifics, our elementary licensure exam is four parts. And several of them have passed three of the four parts. But until they get that fourth part passed, then they're still stuck. Additionally, they also have the science of reading requirements, which we do have cases where we can issue a provisional license if that's all that the teacher is lacking because we know they're going to get some additional professional development support around that. So it's caused us to kind of take a step back and look a little deeper because when we took the Elder Rata situation on the whole, and we looked at the criteria that we have in rules about approving an 1240 waiver, I feel confident in saying that the continuation over the next three years, that they are going to do this in a way that it's going to become a very integral part of their teacher and administrator recruitment and retention plan. They are already receiving coordinated support, Level III coordinated support from the Division around their reading plans, so they have a district plan of support. So this work will be incorporated into that coordinated support that we're already working on with the district. And I believe it does meet the criteria that being able to continue with these waivers and getting these teachers all the way through their pathway is what's needed to provide that equitable access to effective teachers. Probably the most compelling example that they gave was that they have, several of their elementary teachers are former preschool teachers. And so they're now working on their elementary certification. And so for me to say those folks aren't qualified, I'm thinking, you know, those are folks we want to grow in the profession and to continue on because they're teaching kindergarten, first grade, and they're going to be successful if given more time and the supports. And the district is providing very targeted support through some of our licensure-ready help. And so taking this on the whole, I feel like this is the opportunity for the district to continue to provide equitable access to the effective teachers. And we want to work on helping them to be the best prepared teachers they can be.
Do you have questions for Dr. Pfeffer on Elder Rata? Anyone over here? Dr. Moore?
Yes, thank you for sharing. In reviewing their application, is Elder Rata on today? Or are we just asking you questions now?
They're on.
Should be Dr. Tucker and Ms. Powell.
Great, thank you all. I appreciate the breakdown that you all provided of the teachers that you've hired over the past five years. I was interested, though, to see in that in elementary, middle, and high school, what percentage of those teachers are on those levels?
What was the question?
Of the 88 teachers that have been hired under the waiver, how many of those have been elementary, middle, and high school?
We're looking that up right now.
I think, too, to second that, I would like to hear if you all have any evidence and stories of these teachers and how they have been successful in your district. I appreciate that you all included some survey feedback, hearing from, it sounded like, teachers and potentially parents and students about this waiver.
So when you're referring to stories, I don't know the exact number, I think it's written into the waiver, but we have a number of teachers that are on the waiver that were nominated for Teacher of the Year in our district. So they're exemplary teachers. I think we're still looking for the numbers that you just requested.
It's about even across the board, more in elementary, but it really varies so much year to year that it's hard to know. Like in this particular year, I might have more getting off of elementary and more, and then some that are AAP and provisional. So it really is such a moving target at any given time. Like, for example, since we've submitted this waiver request, we've had four more get licensed. So.
Did that answer the question?
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
And Dr. Moore, if I could add, part of that coordinated support, what we've really thought about through this whole process is we already have mechanisms in place through our state accountability plan. So our levels of support are there so that when we need to engage with districts, whether in a particular system, whether it's the fiscal system, the human capital system, or the academic system, in this case, we're going to be adding the academic system to, or the human capital part to the academic system coordinated support. So we're going to be regularly reviewing with them their status. And another reason that I forgot to mention a while ago, that I feel like over the next three years, we're going to see a big change, is that they have, they are establishing the Educators Rising Chapter. They have established a partnership with SAU for the Pre-Educator Program of Study, and they're going to be offering that pathway of courses. So we'll be working with them to see if students are enrolling in those courses, are they taking that for concurrent credit. But in reviewing SAU's enrollment last spring of teacher candidates, we're seeing a pretty good number of candidates that are available in that area of the state to, you know, who are part of their education program. So we're going to continue to work with SAU also to monitor their pipeline. But I would anticipate that a year from now, we're going to see some clearer data as far as what that future pipeline is going to look like. And so that was something we talked about with the district. We wanted this approval to go hand in hand with that already established coordinated support. That could be ramped up to higher levels of support if necessary. I don't think it will be because I think we're on a good path here.
Any other questions for Dr. Pfeffer or the people from Elder Rata?
I'd like to make a couple of comments, if that's all right.
Sure.
I really did appreciate reading through their applications. I like the fact that the teachers must make progress at each semester. The Tutor 240 program through the Co-op, you said, has made a difference. Can you share a little bit about what that is, the 240 tutoring program? Do the teachers have to travel to the Co-op? How do you do that? No?
No, ma'am. So Tutor 240 is an online platform. It has a monthly membership that's associated with it. I think it's about $40 a month. What happens is, you go in, you take a practice test, it indicates the areas where you're weak, and then it sends you through tutorials, and you work on your deficits so that it helps you better prepare for the exam. And so it really is just about prepping for the licensure exams. And our Co-op is offering that free to our teachers that are in, under our waiver. And so we're able to get them really working on licensure and retesting.
There's also a number of other online platforms that if our teachers find that they think it's useful, will pay for it as well.
Oh, that's great. I noticed you also involve your teachers in the PLC process, which I think is really a great idea. What is your beginning salary for teachers? I know we're really focused on that. Is your district able to kind of keep up with that in the area?
Yeah, so in the past eight years that I've been here, we've provided four salary increases. This past school year, our starting salary was 38.5, and for the next school year, it will be 40.
Okay, great. All right.
Very competitive in South Arkansas.
That's wonderful. All right, well, thank you for your being with us this morning and answering questions. I appreciate all your work.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, I think we're ready for a motion then on Elder Rata 1240 district waiver requests.
I will move to approve.
Okay, we have a motion by Dr. Rankin. A second by Mr. Henderson. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Dr. Pfeffer, I think this would be a good time for a conversation on how 1240 waivers have impacted the students of Arkansas, what effects are we seeing, how is it impacting recruitment, and are there any barriers that we are putting in place by approving 1240 waivers? And so could you kind of lead us through a conversation about that, please?
Yes, I'd be happy to. And if I could, I'm going to get a few people up here to help me because I want to illustrate just a little bit. I want to try to see if I can be a good teacher here. So I think I visited with a few people. If I've talked to you this morning, if you'll come on up, Ms. Kaufman.
We will try to be good students then.
Yes. We're going to make this a little more interactive and good visuals here.
Okay.
Okay, all right. So let's do this. Ms. Post, if you'll stand by Ms. Saracini, and Ms. Kaufman, if you'll move on the other side there. Okay. All right, so we have four teachers here. Okay, we have teacher A, B, C, and D here. So Ms. Saracini is Teacher A. Ms. Saracini has taught for 20? 20, 25 years. She's taught for 25 years. Ms. Saracini has, she's elementary and middle school certified. She can teach anything from preschool all the way to grade A. She, her students have top achievement and growth scores every year. She's a National Board Certified Teacher. She, parents just love having their students in her class.
We need to clone her.
Yes, yes. Teacher A, remember that. Okay. Teacher B, Ms. Post is Teacher B. Ms. Post has been teaching now for five years. But prior to that, Ms. Post worked in the business sector. So she came to the profession through an alternative certification, but she is a fully certified teacher, can teach any middle school grade. Her students do well, particularly in math. She is not, she does not love teaching reading as much as she loves teaching math, but she can teach all those subjects. And Ms. Post loves her new career and is very excited to be a teacher. Teacher C is Dr. Pride. Dr. Pride is coming new to public education. She wants to teach elementary, but her history has been at higher ed. And she has taught at all kinds of prestigious universities. She's been a basketball coach and national championship basketball coach, you know. But she wants to teach kindergarten.
Oh, wow.
She's going to come and teach kindergarten. She's never taught reading a day in her life, never had a reading course, but she has great credentials, and she is so excited to start teaching kindergarten. And then we have Ms. Kaufman. Ms. Kaufman is a world traveler. She is, she loves to travel, and she loves to read. She leads book clubs everywhere she travels. She, you know, stops and just does that. She is, has volunteered with Special Olympics for years and loves all kinds of community work. And she's wanting to teach both elementary and middle school students. So we have all four of these people, all four of these teachers here. Okay? Which teacher do you want for your children, or your child? Let me just start there. Which teacher do you want for your child? All of them. Okay, Ms. Newton says she wants all of them. All right? When you think about it, you think about the characteristics and the qualities that each one of them bring. Okay? Ms. Saracini, traditionally, and probably 20 years ago, Ms. Saracini, Teacher A, she was the norm, right?
Mm-hmm.
That's what we expected. And that's pretty much what our teaching workforce looked like. Over time, Teacher B, Ms. Post, over time, that has become more and more of a pathway to the workforce, and we have brought some wonderful talent to our workforce because people come in with different backgrounds and experiences, and they come to the workforce ready to teach those subject areas where their careers first took them. And now we have that pathway for highly qualified professors to come to us from post-secondary institutions and to bring a different kind of wealth of experience. And who wouldn't want a, someone who had been a successful basketball coach coming in to work with those young kids? I mean, they're full of energy, they're full of fun. And the organization that it would take to be a national championship basketball coach would be great in any age setting, right? And our community people, now more than ever, schools can't do all of it alone. And we heard that over and over again in our, in the Ed Committee meeting the other day. You know, we are expecting schools to do things now, and teachers to do things now, that weren't the expectation even just a few years ago. And that's monitoring everything from social media, communication with families, to knowing about all those support structures. So it really is a very, very different way of thinking about education. Okay? The problem is, right now, we are starting to have to hire more Teacher Ds, more and more, but we're trying to treat them like Teacher A or Teacher B. And it's not anybody's fault, and it's not something that anybody's doing intentionally, but our systems are still designed for one teacher to one classroom model that Teacher A was responsible for throughout our probably 20th century education model. And so moving into the 21st century, we have to think differently about how we're staffing, how we're supporting kids. And we're going to do that through education teams like this. So Dan, I sent you a slide. You walk and go to sit down. Thank you so much for your help. So when I talk about the impact that waivers have had on our workforce over the last few years, I pulled this from my school info. So this is information that is available there. This is information that comes from data that schools enter in master schedules. So it's representative of courses that are being taught by a teacher with a licensure exception or a waiver from licensure. And so if you look at that data over time, and I don't think we can see 2022. Perfect. So as you look at that and notice the change in the colors and the types of waivers that have grown more prominent, what are the types of waivers you're seeing that we're seeing more and more of? More at 1240? More at twelve-forty.
Long-term sub.
Probably, it looks like the long-term sub is growing. That emergency teaching permit has grown some, okay? Now, there are some positive things that we're seeing there. You're seeing that effective teacher waiver. That's, that's there, and that's intentional because that's those teachers who are really, really good at middle school but maybe need to slide down to a fourth or fifth grade position can do that. So it's providing some flexibility. When you look at the approved additional licensure plans, those are teachers who are licensed, who are adding to their license. And we like to think of that as, as adding that value to, to that person's professional expertise. So, but it is definitely a sign that we have more and more teachers who are not our teacher A. And we have to be aware of that. And so just saying, well, we're going to mentor or we're going to provide more support, we're going to have to be really, really intentional about, about what that looks like. But as I've been digging in with the, really looking at these waivers and where districts are, what we're also finding is, in many cases, we are having teachers that are going through preparation programs, but they're coming out and still not getting their license and still not, in some cases, even getting the degree because it comes down to not passing a test. And so I think that's something that we've got to really step back and examine. And so, so really, I want to do two things. I want to come back next month and have some of our team talk to you all more about a teaming approach to educating students. And what does that look like? How do we take that expertise of all four of those teachers? And how do we wrap that around to provide the very best education for kids, but continue to support, to support those educators so we have a well-prepared workforce? Because that's when we're going to get back to stability in the workforce is when we have well-prepared teachers. But the other thing that I would like to ask your support for is for us to really sit back and examine our current licensure exams and the impact on recruitment as well as alignment to effectiveness. We want to really examine whether performance-based assessments can be an alternative to traditional content, to the traditional content test for both traditional and non-traditional pathways. We want to determine whether new licensure exams need to be considered for some of our areas, and particularly that elementary education. And what we would like to ask is that we take the next couple of months to really do an analysis, prepare a report to bring back to you in August, and then look at whether or not we're ready to make any kind of policy recommendations or whether that's something we'll need to continue to examine in the future. But we, that was what I wanted to bring to you for some consideration today and conversation.
The numbers, just looking at the numbers themselves jump out at me, you know, in, in the space of, you know, five years, we've more than doubled the licensure exceptions. And so we want to make sure that not only are we doing the right thing for teachers, that we're doing the right thing for kids. And I, I think, you know, the things that we, we've learned, or I have learned, let's say it that way, in the last month or so about making sure that we have data to back up decisions. I think this drives that conversation for, for, for you and, and your, your team to go back and look at these different areas and, and see where we can improve, where we can get better, and what are the needs are. And so I, I think gathering that information is the, the right step. Comments from Dr. Rankin?
Thank you, Dr. Pfeffer, for that report. And I do have a question. You mentioned about losing a number of them because they can't pass the test. Is that the praxis?
Yes.
Okay, do you know what percentage of our loss is attributed to the praxis? That those who don't continue in the field, do you have that number statewide?
That, that's part of the data that we want to gather. So, so that'll be what we're going to need to get into.
We don't know that number, but we're, we're probably all in agreement. We think that's the, that's the sticker to that. Because that, that does break my heart every time I hear about that. You hear someone who has put years of effort into becoming a lifelong educator and they're one point away, or they cannot pass one particular, you know, part of it in the core testing that they're not even going to teach. That's not even going to be their field of teaching. And so I hate that, that that has been a moniker for so long.
And we've, and, and it's more and more evident, too. It's, you know, you have the licensing component, and then you have the assignment in the classroom. And so we even see a lot of times students who would go and, who, who might complete an elementary licensure program, but then when they would go to the district, they would be assigned to teach special education under an ALP. So I think that's part of the equation. Probably first, we focus on the licensing piece and the, and the barriers there. But then I think probably that can also be a secondary component. And, you know, really, when we talk about success for teachers, you're going to be more successful. It's something you're well-prepared to do. Again, I think that's where the residency model and these students having those early experiences to be in schools, to be doing student-facing work throughout their preparation, that is going to just automatically put them ahead of the game. But we've got a little while before we're, we're really getting there.
Well, thank you so much for taking a look at that.
And we will, once we have that reported, we'll hopefully have that at the August State Board meeting. But I will email you a copy of the results. Tell us that.
I do have a question.
Ms. Switz.
Have we, and maybe this is to come. One of my hesitations with twelve-forty waivers has always been feeling like we're devaluing the current A teachers. Have you heard any of that? Have you, you know, been looking into this? I mean, not every successful teacher has to be an A, right? But I would also hate for those that have done the work to put it in to become that, to feel like, well, they just go to the State Board, they'll let anybody become a teacher.
You know, that's a good question. I mean, because actual forty waivers have been in place for a while, and Secretary Keemack can weigh in on this. I think in some cases, the need has become so great. But, but districts on the whole are doing a good job of using that as flexibility for hiring and then really working to get teachers into a pathway. So, so that's been a positive. However, it just has not resulted in getting us that workforce that we need because then there are so many issues that come along. I mean, you know, you literally are thinking about a teacher D who's expected to walk in and teach a wonderful lesson, you know, to anywhere from twenty to, you know, a hundred and fifty students in a day. And when you're, when you're just really not prepared for that, it does become difficult. So, so we think part of it is, as we're moving forward, teacher Ds can be very, very effective, but depending on the role that they're playing on a team. And if we can get to a point in our future where no new teacher is ever in a classroom by themselves until they're fully ready and experienced, and, and different teachers can play different parts on that team. So next month, we'll be bringing some ideas that we are starting to work on with districts and how to navigate that. But definitely getting to a place where educators still feel valued because absolutely, we want that.
Well, and I assume there's also on the teacher As that are mentoring these teacher Ds, they feel overtaxed on that level because they're having to structure somebody that has not come up through the traditional grade of that. That's always my, just thought in the back of my mind.
Yep.
Yes, I mean, that is feedback that we've heard. And typically, we don't hear it at the department. I mean, I see it on social media, Facebook. You know, there, there's some of that feedback that happens. It has been said that when various pieces of legislation dealing with waivers has been under consideration by the legislature, that has been, you know, a, a statement that I have heard in various forms. But I would also say that we saw, when you think about the team, you know, what, what strikes me is that we saw this at work at White River School District in Washington, where, you know, there were teacher teams that there were long-term subs in their RTI meetings, in their collaborative time meetings. And the other teachers were coming around to support that long-term sub to make sure. You could tell, you really couldn't tell which one was the long-term sub and which one was the A teacher. So it can happen. We just don't have the systems and the structures and the practices in place right now that, that facilitate that, and they don't happen overnight, you know, you have to grow into it. And that's, that's really what, we know that the traditional pathway of becoming a teacher is never going to be back to what we saw before. And you say before when? I don't really know before when because we've been seeing these, these conditions change for a couple of decades now. But to respond to that, it's not to water, our response shouldn't be to water down. And so far, what we've created were Band-Aid approaches. Ms. Newton can remember, maybe Ms. Dean can remember, I'm not sure. But before, we had our new auditorium. I remember a superintendent standing at that podium saying, "Just give me warm bodies" because they were seeking twelve-forty waivers. And that was, that was the condition that that superintendent was dealing with and was, didn't know what else to do. You know, those types of things, when a teacher hears that, that does devalue them. We don't want that. That's not what we're shooting for. So the work that Ivy and the team have been doing to get this information available to you or start prepping, prepping for this information, I think is going to be invaluable to y'all as we go about, and, and working with the districts to make sure that when we do grant waivers, the processes are in place to develop the systems that all teachers are effective in their particular roles.
I'll, I'll just add that, add to that, too. I think that now more than ever, the mentoring through our co-ops becomes extra, extra special because that is a way to ensure some consistency throughout the state and allow that, no matter where you're located throughout the state, to have that access. And yet that consistency through the co-ops, through the mentoring process, too, especially targeted to those that have come up through unique methods and alternative methods of certification. So that can be exciting, too, and real potential for growth.
And they really have had to respond because in one school, you'll have all of these different types of teachers that they'd imagine when you bring it to a region, how, you know, but in some ways, it does help because they can pull those teachers together in those more groups where they can help target those needs of different individuals.
Go ahead, Dr. Mark. This is not new. You've heard me express this before, but we know that the end goal is not licensure. It is student impact.
Yes.
And so have we made any progress on being able to, you know, do a statewide glimpse of what is the student impact with these twelve-forty waiver teachers?
So I think one piece we can add is as, excuse me, as the requests come in, we can ask the districts to go in and pull data from
Yes.
their, their student achievement and growth. We now have, districts have the ability to be able to look at their student data, student by student, by teacher. And so that is a piece that we can start adding, asking to be added to requests, especially in the continuation of waivers.
Certainly. And I think in the same vein, we know test scores is not the end-all, be-all, and that is just, but that is one snapshot that we are missing because right now, the only bar we see is that licensure. And that's not telling the, the bigger story. And so, and again, that one test score isn't also telling the bigger story. But the more information, the more data we have so that we are able to make these decisions, it's very helpful.
Is it possible that Argent might be able to add that at some point to the system where that would pull as a state? I don't know, that might be a Ms. Kaufman question, but would that be possible where, where we wouldn't be relying on the districts giving it, but it would just be automatically something that we could look at as a statewide issue?
So we have a, in, we can, we can provide information, updates to our student growth portal and the, the information that's available there. You've actually been working with districts on that.
So one of the things that we ran into as we're working on that process is that districts, when they received a twelve-forty waiver, you know, there's a lot of people in a school district that do a lot of different jobs, and whoever is doing data entry may not have all of the latest and greatest information from around the district. So what we found as we're going through this work with school districts is more people are, more staff, more teachers are labeled in our system as AWL, which is an actual twelve-forty waiver, than actually should be. And so what we're working through with the school districts is to help them clean up their data. So if we were to pull that and give you a report right now, it would not be accurate.
Okay.
So we need time to work with districts, and that's why we're having these conversations with districts and helping them. We helped El Dorado clean up many of theirs. They had people that really should be under a different licensure pathway, not using twelve-forty. And they knew that, but the person entering the data may not have gotten that message. And so it's, it's not siloed work anymore. It's very cross-level work, and it's taking, it's just taking time to clean it up.
So it's something that we can potentially get to, we're just not ready there?
Yes, we will potentially have it. It just, right now, what we could give you would not be the truth.
I just know sometimes when you depend on districts to give you information, again, it's not always accurate, so.
I depend on districts to give me everything.
Yeah.
So.
Okay.
They're getting there.
Okay. One, one, one question I had, Dr. Pfeffer, was I know that Ms. Saracini is working with the EPP, trying to, to make some progress and input there. And, and just, just personally, I have known a, a couple of young men that have gone through programs at, at different EPPs and, and got to the end and could not pass a test. And both of them would have made excellent educators. And because they could not pass, they went into a different profession. And, and we lost two potential educators. Is there some way that we can take and link what you're, you're thinking about and what Ms. Saracini is, is working on already? Is there some way that that can be linked where we're not just thinking about twelve-forty, but we're thinking about the whole picture of teacher recruitment and retention?
Well, so absolutely. So everything I've talked to you about here today, it, it is the whole picture of recruitment and retention. This is not just about our twelve-forty. The, the data are a result of several different things that are in place. And so this is absolutely about a completely refreshed way to look at, okay, are there other options? So for example, are performance-based assessments more appropriate for someone who goes through an alternative certification pathway than expecting that they would pass a praxis exam before they even start getting prepared?
Okay.
So that, that's what this is all about. So, so this will fit into the, the whole Ed Prep and State Review process. So, and, and we want to look at these options for not only traditional, but also the non-traditional pathways. Because all of the alternative certification routes, those were first developed for teachers who had the content knowledge. They needed the pedagogy support. What happens a lot of times, that we know when someone is hired under a waiver, they may not have the content knowledge at the very beginning. And so that content knowledge gets developed over time as they are, are practicing. But, you know, you're trying to, to do all of that at the same time. So this would be, I'm taking a look at, are there some, some different ways to assess whether or not someone has the skills over time rather than expecting them to demonstrate it in the same way someone who goes through a completely different type of preparation would?
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Ms. McFatris, do you have any questions?
No, thank you.
I had a comment, Ms. Newton.
Okay.
I just wanted to say, as someone who was honestly like an excellent test taker all through school, including college, I don't think I ever experienced test anxiety until the praxis. I, I feel like you should all experience it. You are padded down. I remember the little bitty pocket. I don't even know what that pocket is for in your pants, but that little itty, they were digging around in that. They want to know if your glasses are smart glasses. So if you're wearing glasses, those are taken off and examined to make sure you're not trying to cheat and have somehow, I mean, you're almost treated like a criminal as you come in. And then you're sent, at, at least where I'm from, you're sent into a small room, and you're given headphones to, to put over your ears if you want to. I remember putting them on and then thinking, I can hear myself breathe. Can they hear me breathing? Am I distracting someone? You know, like just the mental game that it was. And I did fine, but I can see someone who definitely has the knowledge walking into a scenario like that and not being able to demonstrate their knowledge for the anxiety of the environment. So I, I think we're doing teachers a disservice when here we are saying we should offer a performance-based assessment for our children, and yet we're not offering a performance-based assessment for our teachers. And they should be able to demonstrate what they know in a friendly environment. And in a way where they can really shine instead of in a cold room trying to figure and in a way where they can really shine instead of in a cold room trying to figure out if people can hear them breathe.
So we will look forward to some, go ahead, Dr. Hill.
I, I appreciate you saying that, just, you know, when I look at specific subgroup of population in the United States of America, 52% of African Americans dropping out of school and understanding that relational equity is, is, is the, is root of persistence. And, and, you know, that's the catch 22 when you can say, you have a person who can pass a test or a person who can relate. I just, I, I mean, the numbers don't lie, and together they tell our story. And, and when you see this happening, and, and, and we understand that, I'm, I'm proud to see us looking at a different approach because obviously, as I, you know, spoke two weeks ago for Commissioner Key at the GED program, I mean, we're, we're awarding GEDs more than we are high school diplomas because our kids are dropping out, and, and I think we have to look at that holistically on our teachers. And, uh, and, and, and how can we find individuals that bring all of what's needed to keep our students engaged into the educational process? And it's not just what we know, it's what we can relate to, to, to help those who are being what they call emotional poverty, which we, which we're, which we're trying to teach to in, in many situations from, from low-income individuals who, who, who may not have that. So I applaud your efforts and, uh, and trying to make sure we do everything that we possibly can to keep students engaged in the educational process because when we don't, we all pay for it on, in another way, in another approach.
I think we all know that the best thing that we can do for, for the children of Arkansas is to put a high-quality teacher in those classrooms, and, and that's our goal. It is not just for teachers, but for, for those students. We want to make sure that they all, not, no matter where they're located in Arkansas, they all have access to that, that high-quality teacher. And so whatever we can do to do that, and we appreciate your team being willing to gather us some information and some data, and then Ivy coming back in a couple of months with some recommendations for us, something that we can do.
We look forward to it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments before we move on? All right, we're going to move on to our next item on the agenda, consideration of Friendship Aspire Amendment Requests. Ms. Summons, welcome. Good morning.
Good morning. Dory Summons, Desi Charter Office, consideration of Friendship Aspire Amendment Request. The charter is requesting to merge Friendship Aspire Pine Bluff, Friendship Aspire Little Rock, and Friendship Aspire Southeast Pine Bluff. They're also requesting change of grade levels served from grades 10 to 12 to grades, um, 5 to 12, and increase the enrollment cap for Southwest Pine Bluff from 25 students to 75 students. We also have a document that, um, that has already been uploaded, and if I can get Ms. Kaufman to come and help me with this a little bit. We also have Ms. Virginia Perry, and this kind of explains what, um, the request that they're asking for.
Okay.
So at this charter meeting, we had to take a different approach because, um, it, it was a lot of information and really there are minimal changes.
Okay.
So what they're requesting to do is to put all of their charter schools under one charter, so they'll have one charter contract, and that charter will be called Friendship Aspire Academies Arkansas. And then they'll keep their various schools, they're doing some name changing so that the nomenclature is the same on each one of them, Friendship Aspire Academy, then the location, and then if there's multiple buildings in the location, then they are naming elementary or middle.
Okay.
And then we, um, so the reason you'll see some things marked out, that was the old name, and this document we came to agreement upon during the charter panel, but we had to help them change L E A numbers, we had to make sure we changed all of our documentation, their contract test to reflect everything. So we've gone through with them and, and made all of the changes. And then if you'll scroll down, or whichever direction, let me see the rest of the page. What you'll see is we, we came to clear agreements about what their cap is, there's an overall cap, but then what is the cap for each campus to be very clear to the community that they are growing these schools, which is a very smart move to grow them. And so when you see it in there that it says progressive cap, okay, they're going to that number, but, uh, for example, on that last column, you'll see that's a progressive cap to 525 for both campuses, but, um, the cap for actually for K4 and then for the 68 buildings are spelled out. And you have to spell those out so that you're very clear to parents how many seats we have available.
Okay.
And so we've tried to capture everything on here, but Ms. Henry's on to assist us.
She is.
All right. We'll see if we have any questions on Friendship Aspire. Any over here? Dr. Moore?
Thank you. This document was very helpful to synthesize all of it. I did notice it says that the charter expires in June 2023. What is that based off of? Was it an initial five-year charter for one of them?
Yes, so typically, um, we renew charters typically around a five-year schedule. Um, we do have some charters that have shown experience, and they can have longer lengths of time, uh, but most of them come in and just request a five-year renewal each time until they get everything worked out and kind of get to where they're, um, you know, like if they're doing a progressive cap, where they're, where they're trying to get to.
So this whole set of schools now will be under review next summer, under one charter to review or not review with the five of them?
Yes. So when they come in for amendments or little changes, tweaks like this, um, and Ms. Henry will be the best one to speak to this, but the purpose that they gave us for doing this, and we certainly recommended this to them, is it cuts down the overhead cost of running each school as a separate district, and it lets you have one district administration to meet our standards, and, uh, it just makes it much simpler, gives common names, um, it just kind of helps to clean up everything, including our accountability system.
That's helpful. Thank y'all.
Any questions over here? Ms. McFetris?
Uh, no, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, we're ready for a motion, and this motion would be to review or not review.
I'll move to not review.
Have a motion by Dr. Moore?
I'll second that.
Okay, well, second by Ms. McFetris. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Thank you. All right, um, Ms. Kaufman, is this, now who's coming? All right, come on, Mr. Southern. Uh, the final standards accreditation status for 2021, 2022.
So Matthew Sutherland, Standards and System Support Charter. Uh, what we have here is the recommendation for the 2021, 2022 final standards for accreditation status for the Arkansas Public Schools and School Districts, and it's included in the attached report. And basically, all of the districts and schools are accredited pending until, you know, your motion.
Okay. All right, we'll see if you have any questions or comments. Any board members have a question or a comment?
You just, so we have, I, I believe we've done a few accreditation waivers. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so those are included in here?
Yes.
And there's no additional waivers?
There's no additional waivers.
Okay, just thinking through that, okay. Thank you.
Ms. Woods, did you have a question?
No.
All right, we're ready for a motion.
I'll move to approve.
A motion by Dr. Moore. Seconded by Ms. Dean. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Southern. All right, we are ready for public comment release, Rules Governing Nutrition and Physical Activity Standards and Body Mass Index for Age Assessment Protocols. Ms. Park. Welcome.
I'm Kristy Park, uh, attorney for the Department of Education. Um, I'm here today to present the updates to the Rules Governing Nutrition and Physical Activity Standards and Body Mass Index for Age Assessment Protocols in Arkansas Public Schools. Um, I have with me Jerry Hart, the Director of School Health Services, and Sheila Chastain, the Associate Director of the Children Nutrition, I'm sorry, Child Nutrition Unit on Zoom if you have any content questions.
Okay. We are seeking to release these for public comment, pending Governor's Office approval. Does anyone have a question before they are released for comment? Okay, we are ready for a motion.
I move to approve.
Okay, we have a, a motion, uh, by Dr. Rankin. Seconded by Mr. Henderson, sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Ms. Park.
Thank you.
All right, next up is Digital Learning Plans. Ms. Kaufman, you're, you're coming this morning with lots of help, looks like.
I brought a team. So, um, as you know, um, after the, after the pandemic, in the midst of the pandemic, we, um, we had to really think outside the box about how we provide learning opportunities to kids. Last year, through an expedited process, it's really an act 1240 waiver, but we worked through our teams reviewing all of these plans and giving feedback to the school districts. You ended up approving 170 districts, AL, uh, district learning plans and 31 charters, so, um, for a total of 201. Forty-six of those expired at the end of the school year because they had only requested one year. So we sent out a commissioner memo, invited them if they wanted to reapply, and also to give school districts the opportunity to update, revise if needed. So, um, in this expedited process, there are no new waivers added. In fact, what you're going to hear, or what you read as you read the blurbs is we actually have schools saying, we don't need waivers, and we love when that happens. So, uh, Dawn's going to tell you about our review process, and then we'll be ready to present our schools.
Okay.
Dawn Bennett, Assistant Commissioner for Research and Tech. At your request, we made sure that this was a rigorous process that the schools had to go through before they were approved by the State Board of Education. A lot of the schools have risen to the occasion on that, and they've really upped their game on digital learning. We realize how, or we realize the importance of digital learning, and I think we've done a really good job in Arkansas, especially when you go around the country and hear what other states are doing. We're very proud of that. But we have 20 to 30 people who put eyes on every single one of these applications because we want to see if we can catch anything. Now, that doesn't mean we're perfect at that, but we think we've done a pretty fine job at that, and I can tell you, Tally keeps, she drives the wagon on that and make sure that, make sure that we do the job right. We believe that, uh, everything that we've submitted to you today is ready to go. If you have any questions for us, we'll be happy to answer those, and, uh, we, we do appreciate you guys in support of digital learning for Arkansas.
Good morning. I'm Tally Harp, I'm with Public School Accountability and the District Support Team. We have, uh, four school districts to present this morning, um, Boonville, Green County Tech, Cave City, and Jacksonville. If you looked in the blurbs that we put in the agendas, um, all, all four of these districts were just making revisions. So, um, Boonville had expired, they just submitted the same exact plan and wanted to extend the length of their plan. Green County Tech, um, made changes from Ingenuity to the Tri-Region, um, Virtual Program. Um, Cave City is adding seventh and eighth grade to the Tri-Region Virtual Program, and Jacksonville is changing their 712 to Virtual Arkansas so that there are teachers that are onsite, are onsite only. And all of the districts are all on here. Any questions?
We'll see if we have any board members that have a question on any of these plans. Anyone over here? No? Dr. Moore?
I do, but is someone else on service? I, um, I appreciate all the work y'all did putting into this and working. I couldn't believe it was 200 districts. How many do we have total in this, districts in the state? Almost every district in the state that y'all have been working with these past few years, and I appreciate that a lot. I wanted to see, as we look at, you know, these districts have all had a virtual program for one year, but potentially more now under, under the COVID previous waivers, any data on success of, of their students and success, whether that be, first of all, just attendance of their online programs, and then, I know we don't have test scores back yet, but more evidence of, of student growth in these programs.
I wouldn't, the districts might have that information. I do know that, um, for example, Cave City, or not Cave City, Green County Tech, after the first year, realized that the Ingenuity program was not being beneficial to their students. They went and listened to the proposal from Tri-Region, felt very comfortable because one of their teachers was running that program and knew that their students were going to get a better virtual option that way. So I know that the districts are looking at that information at the end of each year and making those changes, but if, in terms of specific districts, you'd have to ask them.
Any other questions?
I did have one more.
Okay.
Sorry. And second to that, and will we have more of these next month?
Yes.
Okay. I think if possible, I'd like to hear more, and I know we've brought it in like five times, but from Virtual Arkansas. I know like these, almost all of these are using Virtual Arkansas as a standalone high school, and I want to hear more sort of an update of how things are going with them, especially with those students who are solely using Virtual Arkansas as their school.
We do have, so we have a board in our office, we have about 45, I think, that are, that are still in the review process. These are just the first four.
That's a lot of work.
Make it through, yeah. Okay, thank you.
My question was not so much for these individual programs, but I, I just, I almost feel like that, um, I don't know if the right word is we're getting in too big of a hurry or what, but I would really like to see data from what they did last year before we make it, and even the districts themselves seeing data on what happened last year as far as effectiveness of programs, you know, this worked, this didn't work, before we go in and, and modeling. And I know they probably have some interim data that they're looking at, but, you know, uh, uh, Dr. Pfeffer's going to be proud of me. I, I want to see data, you know? I, I want to see data to make a decision, and, and I don't want to, just because it's, I know it's summertime and, and, uh, districts have to make decisions now on, on what they're going to do next year as far as employing teachers and all of those things, but I would really like to see, and I don't know if it's data that the state can gather or districts gather, but we had a lot of different programs, whether it was Tri-Region or, um, the Arkansas River, we, we just had all these different programs that had multiple districts working with them. I would like to see some data on Virtual Arkansas, which programs are doing a good job with kids, you know, which jobs are making a positive impact because we, we all know there's some virtual, uh, uh, programs that don't have a positive impact on kids.
We're very aware of that, so the first year, of course, is that trial period, and that's why we wanted to give some schools three-year waiver or three-year, uh, grants on this, so they could process and determine what products are good or what providers are not good. We'd be happy to have Virtual Arkansas, and I can guarantee you they're chomping at the bit to tell you about some of their successes and some of their failures as well because it's not a perfect science when we do this. With respect to, uh, data, we are, we've charged Digital Learning Unit, which you met a couple of those team members, uh, the last board meeting or maybe board meeting before that, uh, they're going to be doing some research on some of those numbers in partnership with some of these providers as well, like the Three Rivers Project and Virtual Arkansas, all of those, they're, they're privy to what you're talking about, or they're aware of that, and they do want to supply some of that information as they're doing that research. Yes, we are learning, we did, or Ms. Newton, that we are learning that there are some products that are very much inferior, um, and of course, when you're superintendent, you're trying to decide what's best, and you're in the heat of the moment, you understand that sometimes you get sold a bill of goods. But we, we think that the schools are being very proactive with this because they are working with us, and they are talking to Digital Learning Unit, and a lot of them are talking to, to all the other divisions on what products are good. I know with Tiffany's Team in Learning Services, there's a lot of discussion around, you know, what courses are good, virtual, non-virtual, those kind of discussions are going on internally with us. So yes, we will try to get you some data on that. It's easy for me to say because I don't have but a few weeks left, but anyhow, I'll charge my team with that before I leave.
Okay.
And just to add to that, of course, you know, we do not have assessment data back. Uh, the other thing that has occurred during this year, as you would expect, is at the beginning of school year, there was a large enrollment in digital learning programs, and then as the year went on, uh, most of our school districts are running very small, uh, numbers on enrollment. So to really look at the impact of how the digital learning program, you really want to look at the students that stayed there the whole year
Right.
to see how that, how they may have been impacted. But, um, as we look through there, as Dawn was saying, the more we can look at the three-year data, the better, the more stable that data will be to really help us make long-term decisions. And so And so, as you're thinking about the length of these waivers, you know, two of them, I believe, have asked for three years, just extended on. So, that may be something you want to determine. Do you want to give the full? Do you want them to all, some have asked for one more year. School districts are making decisions about, is this something they want to offer long-term? So, you know, maybe we want to look at a timeline of, we come back and reevaluate the whole process.
So, so they've had one year, and then if we did two more, that would be the end of that three-year where we would be thinking about, everybody would be coming back at the same time, rather than getting into what we got in with the 1240s. Everybody's coming in at different times. This would put us all on the same timeline. We put, leave the ones at one, but then the three-years maybe do two years.
I mean, that's, that's one option. To think about how you may want to come back. And we'd have two years of data before we went into a bigger renewal. So, that's something to consider. The other thing to remember, though, is we don't get that assessment data back until we start getting that back in the summer, and then we have to run the calculations on everything. And we keep Denise busy
Sure.
every day right up until the end of December. So, that information will come to you quickly because we have so many reports that are new.
At the end of three years, that we would have two years of data.
Right.
So, so that would be where you could make a, I would think, an informed decision, even though last year was, you know, started out big and then went small. Hopefully, by the end of next year, we'll be able to have a little bit more consistency.
Exactly. And the other thing I think is interesting is that school districts are coming back and relinquishing waivers.
Yeah.
So, they're figuring out how to do it better. And I think as we all just kind of work through that and listen to each other, then we'll have a good plan moving forward for how we provide these tops-of-educational opportunities for students.
Okay.
Do board members have any thoughts or ideas on what we're talking about here with the digital learning plans? Timelines?
Data? I like the idea that down the road, all the districts are at one point in time. Because I think it is a huge state policy decision that we've made to allow every district to have their own in-person and virtual school. And I think at some point in time, we need to do that, but we need to do that based on the evidence of what's going on. And this is not, this is just doing the same thing. Or tweaking, but we don't have any evidence. And I certainly trust you, superintendents, as you're making these decisions, you're doing what's best for your, your district. But if we can see that from the state level of what's going on, I would support any timeline that puts it all, them all together at one point in time.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments?
Ms. Frino, do we need to do these individually? Since they're different timelines, some are one year, some have asked for one, some have asked for three. Probably each one I haven't meditated.
Excuse me, yes, Ms. Newton, I would do them individually. And also, I think I would get each of the school districts that are on Zoom just to confirm that they would be willing to reduce the time because these actually are at 1240 waivers and they have, you know, opportunity to have a hearing.
Okay, all right. So, the ones that have asked for three years that we might potentially reduce to two years would be Green County Tech and Cave City. Is there someone on from those two districts? Am I looking at the wrong one? Boonville, I had down as one year, is that wrong? Oh, I'm looking at the wrong thing. I'm looking at the wrong thing. You're right, sorry. Boonville is asking for three. And... Is that the only one that's asking for three? Okay, all right, all right. So, Boonville, is there someone on from Boonville?
Ma'am.
Who is? Who? Mr. Goff?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right. We are discussing, instead of renewing for three years, we're discussing renewing for two years. Would you be agreeable to that?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay, all right. Do you have any comments or anything that you would want to say about what you are seeing at your district?
You know, with the, our digital program, we started out with a large number, but by the end of the year, I think we had 11 total district-wide. None of those been at the elementary, one junior high, one high school. And if the students didn't have good support at home, then typically, they were back on campus pretty quickly. The rigor of the courses and what we used was effective. So, the ones that had good support at home, they were successful on it. If they didn't, they, you know, they end up coming back to us. So, the programs that we were using worked well. I'd like to continue doing that for another couple of years. Our goals, I mean, I would prefer all of them be back on campus at some point. But for right now, I think it's important that we continue to have a digital plan for the next couple of years.
Okay, all right, thank you. Green County Tech is just asking for one year. Do you have any comments on Green County Tech? Is there someone on that? Am I looking at these wrong? No, okay, okay, you're right. 2024? 2024. So...
Oh, they had a three-year plan that they're tweaking.
They're, they had a three-year plan, so, so they're just making changes to the plan.
In the system, when there's a dropdown for the years, so the original three years, if, they don't like, Jacksonville didn't change theirs at all, so theirs will still expire at the same time. But Green County, and I think Cave City changed that ending year. So, instead of, you know, being an original three-year plan, they've gone and made revisions. Well, now it's again a three, so it's like adding another year. So, it just be to, I think this way would be to make sure that it just ends by the 23, 24 school year because that's three years from last year.
All right. And 23, 24, okay. Who's on from Green County?
Yes, ma'am, Mr. Garrish.
Mr. Garrish, welcome. Thank you for joining us this morning. Have you, have you kind of understood where our conversation has been going?
Yes, ma'am.
Would you be okay with your waiver ending in the 23, 24 year and then us coming back and reevaluating at the end of that time period?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Do you have any comments on how your program has gone and anything you would want to add?
Yes, ma'am, nothing really to what Mr. Goff said. Really identically, we had a large number at the beginning of the school year, and it continued to dwindle. We were about 3,600 student-sized school district, and we had less than 40 district-wide at the end of the year. We would like to, as you can see in our plan, change the 3-6. We had a decent, you know, experience with Ingenuity, but we have Ms. Kathy Bowlin, and she's on today. She's a former math teacher at Green County Tech. We have a good relationship with her. And we saw a presentation that she brought to our Northeast Arkansas Co-op. And it just, the accountability, knowing what type of person she is, what type of leader she is, we feel like we will get a better experience and better accountability with our students at home in those lower grades. So, that was our rationale for switching. And it was cheaper. So, all of that wound it.
That's a good thing, yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right. Cave City, is that the same thing that they, theirs would have? So, who's on with Cave City?
Hi, Ms. Newton, this is Steve Green, Superintendent Cave City. And I want to echo these other gentlemen. We use the Tri-Virtual program. I also want to brag on Kathy Bowlin as well. And we've been very pleased with the success of that. And like everybody else, our numbers have slowly dwindled down, a little bit smaller. But also, like everyone else, we feel like we need an offering for the next couple of years until all this uncertainty is cleared. Appreciate the opportunity.
Okay. Are you okay with, with this ending at the end of 23, 24?
Absolutely, we appreciate anything you would do.
Okay, all right, thank you. Jacksonville?
Yes, this is Janice Walker. I'm the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction.
Okay.
And we made our waiver request for just one year, as you can see. And as far as our plan, our, we had K through 12. And we did maintain the integrity of our K through 5 plan. We did make some modifications to 6th grade. And then, 7th through 12th grade is where our biggest change is. And that's where we are going with Virtual Arkansas, with a lot of our core and then looking at an additional option for our non-core and as far as our other courses that are non-core, and that is with Buck's Point.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Ms. Walker. Any questions from the board before we move on then? All right, so let's go back to Boonville. And so, we are discussing, and I'm not pushing board if you want to do it for whatever time period, but we have discussed making them all end at the 23, 20, after the 23, 24 year and then coming back and reevaluating as a whole as we go forward with these digital learning plans. Or I guess not we, someone at that particular time. So, do we have a motion for Boonville?
I move to approve their plan, their digital learning plan.
You want to put a time period on that?
To end on the 22, excuse me, 23, 24 school year.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Dean to approve Boonville's digital learning plan to end at the 23, 24, after the 23, 24 school year. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Seconded by Mr. Sutton, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you, Boonville, for joining us. Green County Tech? Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Sutton and seconded by Dr. Rankin to do what?
I think it's just a one-year extension to what I asked for.
Yeah, so do we want to make this on the end of the 23, 24 year again also?
Is that what, we are wanting to do that, yeah.
Okay.
Yes, that's my motion.
Okay, all right. So... So, the motion is to approve the digital learning plan for Green County Tech through the end of the 23, 24 school year. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Cave City? Thank, thank you, Mr. Garrish. Cave City? Do we have a motion?
I move to approve their digital learning plan to end of the 23, 24 school year.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Dean to approve the Cave City digital learning plan through the 23, 24 school year. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Henderson, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next is the Jacksonville Digital Learning Plan, and they have only asked for one year. And so, this one would go through the end of the 22, 23 school year. Okay. Do we have a motion?
I'll move that we approve the digital learning plan for Jacksonville through the 22, 23 school year.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Dean to approve the digital learning plan for Jacksonville through the 22, 23 school year. Do we have a second? Seconded by Dr. Hill, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you, districts, for being here, and thank you for being patient. It's kind of, we worked through not just your plans, but the whole idea of digital learning plans. And thank you, Ms. Kaufman, and your team working through this and giving us some guidance. So, we appreciate all you're doing. And for all the work you do before you bring them to us, that has helped tremendously. Thank you.
Chair, before we leave that topic completely, some of you, I think, caught Dawn's remark.
I heard that, I wanted to ask, get back up here.
That he only has a few weeks left. So, Dawn has informed us that he is retiring at the end of this fiscal year.
Oh, wow.
Not retiring from the workforce, but retiring from the formal education workforce. Right. And can I say where you're...
Absolutely, absolutely.
And he will be joining the Hot Springs Chamber.
Yes.
Metro Partnerships. Metro Partnerships as their liaison for workforce and education.
Oh, wow.
And we are very excited for his new opportunity. I think it's, it'll be a pretty important role that he's going to play, and I can't think of anyone better to fit that role. We will miss him.
Yes.
He has brought so much to this agency, as a matter of fact, through his leadership. You know, we continue to receive awards for our partnerships and recognition, not just state recognition, but national recognition. Earlier this week, the team working with Arkansas Ideas was recognized by, I don't know how you say the acronym.
We call it CED, the State Educational Technology Directors Association, yes.
For, for work in the Arkansas Ideas platform. Daniel Ray, that team is just tremendous. So, I thought I heard some murmuring when he made that comment. Did want you to know that he will be leaving us at the end of this month, and he will be missed, but he won't be far.
Thank you. I look forward to it. So, my time here has been an honor and a privilege to be invited by Secretary Key and Dr. Pfeffer and the rest of the team to be a part of this much, much bigger role than I ever anticipated in my life. And I've said it in, in a message, when Jim Boardman was here, I was one of those young guys who really looked up to him and what he did for Ed Tech and Arkansas. And those of you who know him, you know how big a personality he was. I pale in comparison to that guy. But to be able to serve in a role like this at this level has been very humbling. And I was thinking about, when I professed for about 10 years in higher ed, had I had this experience before I became a professor in ed leadership, I would have done it completely differently. Because I've learned so much about school law. I had one semester prior to coming here, and I think, you know, what you need to know about school law when you come here. But not only that, but the relationships you build around the state, around the country. And I'm leaving on a very, very good note that we're doing wonderful things in our state. More proud than I could ever say in words about what we're doing in the state. My team has been a godsend to me to make this very worthwhile, a lot of fun, and just seeing the good things going. And to know that I came to an ADE that is customer service-oriented means more to me than, you know, because back in the day, it felt like us against them. And now, more than ever, because of the leadership under Secretary Key, we are supporting schools, and I do appreciate that. And I'm grateful to be a part of that. So, thank you, guys. All right? Thank you.
Yeah, and I want to say something. One of my memories right out of the gate, a little over a year ago when I joined, I, I joined in, and I think the conversation was about digital broadband technology. And I remember my question was, what does this look like statewide? You know, how, how do we get a picture of where we're doing well, where are the bright spots? What can we focus on? And I came back from lunch and had the data sitting in front of my computer, broken out in a visual map, county by county, all 75 countings, broken out. And I'm like, is this how things work here? This is amazing. Well, it is when you've got Dawn and then your team. So, thank you so much. I mean, we, we, I just can't tell you how much we appreciate what you've done. You're going to take that talent to Hot Springs.
Well, I can't accept credit for that. That's, that's team, that's the team behind us. And I think Commissioner Key would say the same thing, that we make him look good because that's our job, and we want to make him look good. And my team does the same for me. So, I appreciate my team, so.
Well, we're going to miss you, Dawn. You have been just a great asset to us, and we just appreciate all you've done and wish you the very best.
Thank you.
But keep in touch.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. Thank you so much. Appreciate you.
All right. Well, we're at 12:05. How hungry are you? Do we want to break for lunch and then come back? Or do you want to do your commissioners' report before?
If I could do my commissioners' report before we break for lunch.
Then, break after then?
Maybe give...
Give Ms. Sharon time to, to, okay.
All right, if that's okay, because I have a 1 o'clock meeting, but I'm not sure what the schedule will be the rest of the afternoon. But I do want to present this. So, Dan, if you could pull up that PowerPoint that Dr. Pfeffer sent you.
Teacher salary?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yep. All right, and I don't have the clicker here, so I'll just ask you to advance for me, okay? Ready? Good, okay. So, as you all know, the, last week, news hit that Governor Hutchinson has proposed looking at teacher salaries again. The timing of that, because of the end of the fiscal year and this projected surplus that is coming, it's a good time to look at things like that. But not just from a financial standpoint, but it's also a good time to look at it just from a historical and a comparative standpoint. So if you look at this chart, it gives us a timeline. You see that in 2008 to 2009 school year till 2014, 2015, that minimum teacher salary was at $29,244 for a considerable stretch of time. 2015, when the governor's first term, he wanted to make teacher salaries a priority, worked with the legislature to pass the first increase in several years to the minimum teacher salary, and that continued in 2017. Substantial and important, but still lagging when you look at other states. And in 2019, one of the most significant increases in the minimum teacher salary that we've seen in a number of years, and through Act 170, we increased that gradually to $36,000. And the F Y, or the school year, the 22, 23 school year will be the first year of that final phase of increasing the teacher salary, minimum salary, to $36,000. Then in the '21 session, for sustainability purposes and acknowledging that the gap between the lowest paid districts and the highest paid districts was not closing, we passed, the legislature passed Act 679 and 680 to create the Teacher Salary Equalization Fund. That has already had an impact. We're already seeing that impact. A $1,200 increase to the average teacher salary, FY '22. So are we making progress? Yes, we are. Go ahead, Dan, the next slide. And it's hard to read there, but that is simply the starting salary for the 22, 23 school year that reflects the $36,000 base salary. All right, next slide. But with all the work that we've done, our surrounding states continue to work as well, as we would expect them to do. Mississippi recently passed a tremendous increase in their minimum, and they provided about a $5,000 increase to all of their certified teachers. So they're now going into next school year at $41,500. Tennessee, last month, their state board approved a $40,000 minimum salary. Missouri had legislation to increase theirs from $25,000 to $38,000. Oklahoma was one of the first of the surrounding states, $36,600. That has been on the books for a few years now. Would not surprise me to see that increase as well. Texas is not listed because their minimum salary is $33,600. But the reality is, very few teachers in Texas start at that level, and their average salary is well above all the other surrounding states. All right, next slide, please. The governor's proposal is a $4,000 increase for all certified FTEs, and this was calculated using the non-federal FTEs. So certified staff that are paid out of the, we call it Fund 1,000 for the accounting purposes. But that's where your non-federal certified staff are paid from. And then a $10,000 increase in a minimum salary. One of the criticisms in the past work is, you all know, there are teachers who have been in the system, and depending on their district, they may be topped out. And in some of these previous proposals, there are some teachers that did not receive a substantial increase, if any at all, because of being topped out. The governor's proposal would provide a minimum of $4,000 for all teachers, even if they are topped out, and then bumping the $10,000 increase in the minimum. All right, next slide, please. The proposed funding mechanism for that, we would be looking at an addition of $425 per ADE to the foundation funding. That helps with that ongoing, you know, that's a substantial increase to ongoing revenue for districts. And then we would reinstate what we did from 2019 to move our teacher salary, minimum teacher salary up over four years, a phase in. We did that through the Educator Compensation Reform Program. We would reinstate that program to use some of the surplus funds to help bridge the gap for districts that need to get up from the $36,000 minimum, which actually many districts are going into that for the first time. So, you know, next year will be the first year that they will actually have the $36,000 minimum. But we would bridge that gap between that required minimum for next year to the proposed new minimum salary. It worked well before. We made sure districts were not on the hook long-term. We put in mechanisms so that it was sustainable, and we would be looking at doing that again. Next slide, please. This gives you a sense of why this is important. Because again, you see the substantial difference between the highest paid districts in the state and the lowest paid districts in the state. This is a reflection of the '21, '22 teacher salaries. But you see Springdale, Bentonville, Fayetteville, Rogers, they are all above what we are proposing for the new minimum salary. So those districts would not necessarily have to make adjustments to their salary schedule, but certainly could if they wanted to. But their teachers would still get the benefit of the ongoing, the $4,000 minimum increase in the proposal. But it's really important to those at the bottom and many others like them. It's not just a South Arkansas Delta issue. You see there, Guy Perkins, Ozark Mountain, Rector in Northeast Arkansas. There are many other districts similar to that that have salary schedules that are just going to get to that minimum, the new minimum, next year. They are still at a competitive disadvantage with other districts in the state. And certainly, if you're on the border area, you're competing against Missouri, Tennessee, Louisiana, Texas, Mississippi, and Oklahoma. Next slide, please. Let me get caught up to the next slide here. Okay, this, this again, just shows the gap that we are looking at. The gaps between the highest and the lowest salaries. And you look at the top salary, and that is where, you know, a significant gap exists. And there are a lot of factors there, because the top salaries at some of these districts are driven by local decision-making, local revenues, some elements of that nature. But it really can be disheartening to teachers looking at longevity in the system to know that their top salary may not even be $50,000 a year. All right, next slide, please. So why would we do that now? I mean, the work that we have done with trying to increase that teacher pipeline, create avenues for prepared teachers to enter the classroom. As hard as we're working for that, until the salaries are elevated to a point where teaching becomes an attractive profession for young people, we will always have a limit to our success. We may get more teachers in the pipeline. We may get more career changers. We may get more. But until those salaries become more competitive with other opportunities that young people have, it's very unlikely to see the substantial increase that we really need to see. Just like the A, B, C, D teacher example that I presented earlier. It's also about retention. We have teachers in that, in the system now that are weighing heavily what their future looks like. Anecdotally, we won't have the data for several months, because it is lagging data. But anecdotally, we're hearing from superintendents that are saying that they are struggling more now to fill open positions and having more openings come up than at the peak of COVID. And I don't know the factors that all weigh into that, but just knowing that's what we're hearing. And this is not necessarily from small districts. I think the situation with Eldorado is a good example of a, you know, a good-sized district that is still having challenges. All right, next slide, please. Again, I mean, it's unprecedented investment here that we would be putting into teacher salaries. It shows that it is a priority. It shows educators and potential future educators that we do respect the profession, and we understand the critical need or critical nature of that profession. And it also provides us opportunities to close some of those gaps, especially in the rural areas where they're just simply limited by what they can do. Sure, that's right.
Did you say the $4,000 proposed increase, is that a phased in, or is that?
$4,000 would be going, yes, for the 22, 23 school year. Because we would be asking the legislature to increase the foundation funding by $425. So that money would be in the system as soon as possible after the session closed. The proposed special session. Nothing's been called yet. Right. We're just, I want to make sure you, as a state board, know what's being talked about, because I know some of y'all read it in the paper, because it was part of discussions with the leadership of the General Assembly. And, but this is a good opportunity for y'all to get caught up to where, what we've been working on at the governor's request.
That, that $4,000 would not be considered a bonus, but it would be built into the salary schedule where it would be an ongoing amount?
That would be our preference. I know that that's probably an area of discussion with superintendents. We've had some discussion with superintendents, and that's something that, that was brought up in the conversation. But it would be our preference that it would be in the base salary ongoing.
Okay. And I know the gaps are a big deal in different areas of the state as teachers are in the, in the profession, because your highest three-year salary impacts your retirement. And so when you're looking at that huge gap, and you can go somewhere else and make more, you're not just thinking about this year, but you're thinking about your retirement years. You know, what is my retirement salary going to look like? Because it's based on, it's based on, you know, what you make on your teaching.
Right. And, you know, that's a question that has come up, what would the impact be on teacher retirement? And, you know, concerned maybe that it'd be a negative impact. Well, it's not a negative impact if you have more teachers getting in early and staying longer, because they're paying in that employee and employer contribution. And so it really would help solidify the system as a whole. Okay, thank you, Dan. We'll, I'm, we have a few more slides, but I think this kind of gives us the gist of what we're looking at, and happy to answer any other questions that y'all may have about that.
Board members have questions on the teacher salary issue?
I would just say that I'm just so glad that it is being looked at and supported and pushed by the department. I think we all agree it's a profession that is grossly underpaid. And if, you know, the pipeline speaks for itself, the number of teachers retiring early speaks for itself. You can't fix everything with money, but it is a significant reason that people teach. And I'm just, I mean, I'd love to see the minimum salary in the state of Arkansas be $60,000. And I think we all would, and we're certainly getting closer. But I am so glad it's really being looked at right now.
Thank you.
I just want to say, I completely agree with that, and I'm glad that it's being made a priority, and that's something that we're seeing in the state of Arkansas. As things are brought to our attention, the governor, the Department of Education are making it a priority, putting people in place to make a difference. And I'm so glad that the voices here in Arkansas on the board and people that have been saying this, that it's, it's changing and that they're getting the pay, getting closer to that pay that they deserve as such an important role in our communities. Our teachers play such an important role. And just having conversations with former teachers, present teachers, and especially male teachers, you know, that's, that's one thing that I've heard before is that, just speaking with this particular person as a leader of the home, I need to be able to make a better salary so that, because I have to support myself. I have to support my wife. I have to support my children. And I think it's so important, I know Fitz has talked about this as well, the importance of having a teacher in the classroom that looks like you. And we need more male teachers. We're so grateful for the women that are teachers, but we need more male role models. And I think this will push us closer to being able to have more male teachers in the classroom. So I'm just really grateful for this. So I think it's great.
Thank you, Ms. Dean. Two, two other items I want to cover quickly, school safety. And y'all know that that's been a very hot topic in the last two weeks. Just know that we will, the governor has asked us and Dr. Cheryl May with the Criminal Justice Institute to start looking at the recommendations from the 2018 report. I would say that you will probably see reconvening, I think the governor's mentioned that, of the School Safety Commission. Obviously, there will be some members that will be new to that. You know, we've got Mr. Kane now. Mr. Montgomery was, was here at the time in 2018. So we will be working to support that. And I think the governor is going to have an aggressive timeline for us, as he should, to review those recommendations and determine what else might need to be done or how those revision, or how those recommendations might need to be revised. I will say this, the work that many districts have done with COVID and their COVID funds regarding limiting access and cameras, you know, the purposes for that was to restrict access to, to reduce COVID and to help identify close contacts. There's a lot of similarities between the safety issues there and what can be helpful with school safety for other reasons. So we have made progress, and our schools are safer today than they were in 2018. And I think we will continue to see that happening. The last thing I want to mention is, some of you may have seen this, but Willie Murdock, the superintendent of Lee County School District, has accepted a position as Director of the Great Rivers Educational Service Cooperative. So at the end of the year, end of this month, she will be leaving that role as superintendent. But I'm very excited to announce that Mr. Michael Stone, a native of Marianna and a long-term educator in North Lower Rock School District, elementary teacher, elementary vice principal, or assistant principal, or elementary principal. And then, over the last several years, has been in critical roles at the administrative office in district-level leadership. Will be, I've just announced that he will be the superintendent for Lee County. And he is very excited about going back home and leading his home school district. Ms. Dean, to your point, he is an example of the educator that you just mentioned. And you don't have very many elementary teacher, male elementary teachers that continue to go up and become central office and superintendent-level leaders. And I'm very excited to bring him on board. And with that, I will yield and answer any questions.
Any questions? Okay, why don't we, I know we've got some more reports to go, but I don't want to rush through the, the last reports just to say we got them done, because I think we've got some important reports to hear in a little bit. So why don't we break for lunch? I know some of you got places to go, but we won't take too long, okay? How about that? That be okay? All right, so we'll break and come back at 1:15. Would that be okay with everyone? Okay, all right, we'll be back at 1:15. Okay, all right, we'll be back at 1:15.
All right, I think we're ready to begin the afternoon. Dr. Pfeffer, are you joining us up here or down there, whichever place you'd rather be?
No, I will come up here.
All right. We'll need your expertise.
I'm getting my picture attached.
Oh, yeah. All right. So, thank y'all for letting us enjoy a few more minutes of visiting with those that are soon to go on to better things, but we enjoyed the fellowship and visiting for sure. So, we're going to move on in our reports. The first thing is board liaison reports. Any board members over here have something that you would like to share? No? Ms. McVetris? No?
No, thank you.
Okay. Anyone over here have something you would want to share? Well, since y'all were so quiet, I guess I will. The staff at the department have been working so hard on getting, we talked to you last time about that fifth column, and they have worked really hard on aligning that collaborative teamwork, the PLCs, and what our focus as a state board and a state department will be. And just take a minute and look at that. It'll be that first blue column, and I'm just going to read down through a few of them. The focus on not just student learning at high levels, but also adult learning at high levels. And I think that ties into what we talked about this morning with making sure we had a high-quality teacher in every classroom. The setting goals and the areas of focus, I think that goes back to what we were again talking about this morning when we were looking at 1240 and the digital learning plans, making sure that every decision that we make as a board and then also as a department is based on behavior, not behavior, data, where's that word? I guess I'm reading there, but based on data. And we have data to support everything that we are doing. And then, we as a board and as a department are trying to model for the different districts around the state of what this PLC work would do and how great of an impact it can have on student learning. And I know, Dr. Pfeffer, you said that you had some information on the mapping of the PLCs that you could share with the board to help them understand maybe this PLC process a little bit more.
Probably we need, Dr. Wally, do you want to come talk a little bit about the expansion of the work? Yeah, and I think Dan has some.
Are we rushing you?
Yeah, we've had a lot of exciting, Ms. Wally, Director of Special Projects, so thank you so much for having me. And I missed last state board meeting because we were at a school celebrating, but thank you for presenting about your visit to Washington. And you could just hear the passion in your voice. And that's what you're hearing through the districts throughout the state. So, it's been very exciting to watch this grow. We started, we had our first orientation meeting last Friday with superintendents and co-op directors, with Janelle Keating leading that. And I've got a list of some of the schools that are participating in that. But what we're doing is we're helping and supporting, but also us as a state, in leading PLCs district-wide and statewide. And what does it look like when you're leading it from the district level? Because when we started the PLC project 2017, we started it with schools. And we had one district in that first one. And as we have continued to grow, and we've learned by doing, we have learned that, you know, it's really got to start at the district level, and how do they support it? So, unintentionally, sometimes there are some mandates that may come down from the district office that puts a barrier in front of the school when they're doing the professional learning community project. So, how can they help with that and supporting that? So, we will meet, we started Friday, we will meet with all of the superintendents and their leadership teams once a month. And how do you build your leadership team, and what does that look like? And we've got some maps just kind of to show you what that looks like. And you've already gone through that. Dan, if you, I don't, yes, I do have a clicker. You've already talked about this, so I'm going to skip right through this. But just to show you how this has grown from 2017, I'm going to flip through that quickly just to see, so that you can see the cohorts and the growth of that. And if it's green, it means that you've got some cohorts that have come back and applied for the Professional Learning Community PLC project. So, to me, that tells a story of, hey, we have experienced this, and we want more of it. So, and it has continued to grow. We are now just accepted cohort six, but I don't know if, and then we have the regional networks, which is a scaled-up version of this. And I think we'll get into this more later as we continue to
All right, I think we're ready to begin the afternoon. Dr. Pfeffer, are you joining us up here or down there, whichever place you'd rather be?
No, I will come up here.
All right. We'll need your expertise.
I'm getting my picture attached.
Oh, yeah. All right.
Yeah, the important stuff.
Yes, yes. All right, so thank y'all for helping, letting us enjoy a few more minutes of visiting with those that are soon to go on to better and better things, but we enjoyed the fellowship and visiting for sure. So, we're going to move on in our reports. The first thing is board liaison reports. Any board members over here have something that you would like to share? No? Ms. McVetris? No?
No, thank you.
Okay. Anyone over here have something you would want to share? Well, since y'all are so quiet, I guess I will. The staff at the department have been working so hard on getting, we talked to you last time about that fifth column, and they have worked really hard on aligning that collaborative teamwork, the PLCs, and what our focus as a state board and a state department will be. And just take a minute and look at that. It'll be that first blue column, and I'm just going to read down through a few of them. The focus on not just student learning at high levels, but also adult learning at high levels, and I think that ties into what we talked about this morning with making sure we had a high-quality teacher in every classroom. The setting goals and the areas of focus, I think that goes back to what we were again talking about this morning when we were looking at 1240 and the digital learning plans, making sure that every decision that we make as a board and then also as a department is based on behavior, not behavior, data, where's that word? I guess I'm reading there, but based on data, and we have data to support everything that we are doing. And then, we as a board and as a department are trying to model for the different districts around the state of what this PLC work would do and how great of an impact it can have on student learning. And I know, Dr. Pfeffer, you said that you had some information on the mapping of the PLCs that you could share with the board to help them understand maybe this PLC process a little bit more.
Probably we need, Dr. Wally, do you want to come talk a little bit about the expansion of the work? Yeah, and I think Dan has some.
Are we rushing you? Okay.
Yeah, we've had a lot of exciting, Ms. Wally, Director of Special Projects, so thank you so much for having me. I missed last state board meeting because we were at a school celebrating, but thank you for presenting about your visit to Washington, and you could just hear the passion in your voice, and that's what you're hearing through the districts throughout the state. So, it's been very exciting to watch this grow. We started, we had our first orientation meeting last Friday with superintendents and co-op directors, which Janelle Keating leading that. And I've got a list of some of the schools that are participating in that, but what we're doing is we're helping and supporting, but also us as a state, in leading PLCs district-wide and statewide. And what does it look like when you're leading it from the district level? Because when we started the PLC Project 2017, we started it with schools, and we had one district in that first one. And as we have continued to grow, and we've learned by doing, we have learned that, you know, it's really got to start at the district level, and how do they support it? So that unintentionally, sometimes there are some mandates that may come down from the district office that puts a barrier in front of the school when they're doing the Professional Learning Community project. So, how can they help with that and supporting that? So, we will meet, we started Friday, we will meet with all of the superintendents and their leadership teams once a month, and how do you build your leadership team and what does that look like? And we've got some maps just kind of to show you what that looks like, and you've already gone through that. Dan, if you, I don't, yes, I do have a clicker. You've already talked about this, so I'm going to skip right through this, but just to show you how this has grown from 2017, I'm going to flip through that quickly just to see, so that you can see the cohorts and the growth of that. And if it's green, it means that you've got some cohorts that have come back and applied for the Professional Learning Community PLC project. So, to me, that tells a story of, hey, we have experienced this and we want more of it. So, and it has continued to grow. We are now just accepted cohort six, but I don't know if, and then we have the regional networks, which is a scaled-up version of this, and I think we'll get into this more later as we continue to develop the state model. And some additional support schools and inclusive practices with that. I hope that y'all saw Matt Sewell on the news last night. He did an incredible job of presenting the inclusive practices. But there's just a list of the schools. We've got 78 schools now, so, and practitioners, but I think we'll get into this more later. But anything, we've got, the PLC Institute too, we've got the Professional Learning Community Institute coming to Little Rock July 6th through 8th. So, if any of you can come to that, I would love for you to be able to come and experience that, because we'll have about, I think there's about 1,000 people registered, and most of them are from Arkansas. So, and that's July 6th to the 8th at the State House Convention Center. So, I will get you that information. I think Dr. Pfeffer sent it out before, Gina sent it out before. So, I've got you registered, but, and there's a reception from 4:30 to 6 on July 6th, and I just got that information, so I will get that to the DSE leadership team as well to invite you to a reception there at the State House Convention Center.
And really, if any of you can come, that is a great first taste of the Professional Learning Community work. It gives you just enough of that overview that you have that understanding, and so some of these things that are on this column, this blue column, as far as the role of the state and the state board, it starts to help with the vocabulary, starts to help with thinking about, okay, yeah, what does, what does it mean with the collective commitment or the the having, having the goals and working towards those goals? So, if you could do that, that would really be great. But as far as just continuing on, I know next month we'll have our new board members, and so Ms. Newton and I had talked about that might be a good time after we have the new board members and after going to the institute to start talking about what would be a good focus area that we could set to have as our first goal, so that we're able to come to you and provide you with regular updates as far as progress towards meeting that goal, and that gets into meeting some of this modeling, what we want the work to look like in schools.
Yeah, and we have to sit that at the school board level too, not just at the state board, but at the school board level, when they're, instead of just coming to the school board and talking about their ACT Aspire data, you know, what does it look like? What are they doing to prepare for that before it just gets to the ACT Aspires? What happened last week? What happened last month? And where are we on our achievement with that? So, there's, and you can see it's pretty much aligned across the board, but us modeling at a state level, a district level modeling it for their campus level, a co-op modeling it for all of their region, you can imagine that it will be woven in the fabric eventually to where everybody's doing the processes, that you get all the way to the student benefits from that and impact achievement. And when you talk about kid by kid, skill by skill in the state, it's pretty impressive.
I think that, just trying to step back and think about state board right now, I know a couple of months back, a while back, if I would have been listening to Dr. Pfeffer and Ms. Wally right now, it would have been Greek, okay? Because I had not seen it, I did not know what they were talking about, and that's why I am encouraging you to, if you can't come to the PLC Institute the 6th, 7th, and 8th every day, come one day and see what's going on. If you can't, if you're out of town that day and you can't go, then come, I think you said there's some more things in September, come to get a picture of what we're talking about and how a great of an impact this is going to have on the students of Arkansas, you've got to kind of understand the process. And one of the things that as a board that we're going to do is we're going to have focus areas and goals as a board that we want to see happen with students, and we're going to have data hopefully coming in to show us, are we making progress toward that goal or are we not? And so, for us as a board to understand what they are bringing to us, I think we have to know something about the process, and we have to know what the impact is. We have to know what are school boards and superintendents doing? What are principals doing? What are teachers doing? What are people like Ms. Post doing as team leaders in those districts? What are they doing and how are they impacting students? Well, if they come up here and tell us this, then all we're going to be, and we don't understand the process, all we're going to be is a checklist, okay? And I don't, I don't want us to be ever become that. I want us to understand some of the process and then have an impact into it. And so, you know, I heard many, many times, you can't lead what you don't know. And if we don't know how, you know, if you look at this, this five columns here, what's at the very top of the first column? What is it, I mean, I'm preaching to you right now, and I'm sorry if you don't like it, but if you look at that, it's the very first thing, it says state board, right? So, that means we have a responsibility as a board that we are going to be charged with leading this, and if we're going to lead it, then we better know what we're, we're at, what we're doing, okay? And so, that's why I am asking you as a member of this board for us to learn all that we can, whether it's through this institute, the 6th, 7th, and 8th, whether it's through a state board training where you come in and train us one-on-one, whether it's going to something in September, or whether it's maybe in the fall, us arranging a visit to a school here in Arkansas that is doing it well. But we need to know what's going on, and so I'm asking for a commitment from y'all as board members. I know it's, you know, we give up time already, and we give up time and effort, but I think we owe it to the children of Arkansas. If we're going to do this, let's do it right.
And if you could only do a day, and you're not for sure what you need to do or which day, call me and I'll help intentionally make sure that I find one of the speakers or keynote speakers that you need to hear in order to get the overview of the picture, and we'll try to set that up so that you can have the experience that you would like to have.
And we don't want to, you know, some of these things might pull you out of your comfort zone. We can find a place where you would feel comfortable, where you can observe, where you can do these things and gain knowledge, but, you know, feel comfortable in what we're asking you to do. So, Ms. is a great, great help to us in leading this process. Dr. Pfeffer will help. So, just get with them and work with them, and they'll find you a spot that you can learn.
There's a lot, and you may want to share the visit. We've had, California just recently came and visited with this because they're looking at what is Arkansas doing, and this is their second time to come and sit down and spend, they spent two days here. And it was, and Dr. Pfeffer and I've talked about the experience that we received in Washington and the aha, they were receiving that, they got that same experience here in Arkansas, and they were just blown away. So, it made us step back and go, you know what? We've got a lot going on right here in the state of Arkansas, and they were able to see that and be a part of that, so.
And also the list of schools here, as you look down that list, if those are schools in your area or you have connections there, then that may be something that, you know, when they're getting together and they're working on their district journey, you know, being able to connect and to get to listen in and experience some of their conversations. I think they, you know, would feel support from knowing that you want to learn with them and from them. Some of our conversations this morning around data, I think this is going to help us, you know, helping me even to think through when things are presented to you. A lot of the data you ask about, we have it available through MySchoolInfo or through insights, and districts have that data and should be looking at that data. And maybe what we need to do is also help structure when they're going to come present to you, they know they need to come and present their student growth data, they need to come and present to you their student, you know, some kind of results. But if we're clear about what those data are that you need to see in order to make your decisions, and then we can let them know, then that makes that presentation so much stronger. And so, I think, I think there's a lot of potential for all of this as we kind of learn more about how to structure our systems, just like we want them to.
If you look at this list, it's from all over, so you would not necessarily have to travel here to Little Rock to get some insight, so, you know, some of those, be sure and contact them.
It's a lot of great things, and just another piece of little information, we, out of our model schools, which in order to be a PLC model school, you have to show, have evidence of three years of student achievement. And if you look at percentages of campuses and schools that are model school status, we are number two in the nation.
Wow, wow.
That's pretty incredible, and I hope that we will be number one in about another three or four months.
All right.
Banking on it.
I like hearing that. So, those, that may be some of the places we want to visit in the poll.
Absolutely.
Thank you. If you may have a question or a comment, and I didn't mean to, but anyway, okay. Ms. Anderson?
So, so not necessarily the meetings, but those are the ones that are going to be involved in the district-wide work, and we will be having those meetings here in Little Rock, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. would you mind coming to the microphone, because we have people watching live stream?
Yes, we have those groups who are split into four different groups, and they will all be meeting in Little Rock, and so I can get you the dates of those. That's just a list of schools. So, if there's one in particular, and you want to know when they are meeting, just contact me, but the first set of meetings that they will have, they did orientation last Friday, but their first set of meetings will be September the 26th and 27th at the Bit and the Bits Center. You are more than welcome to join us.
Yeah, so for example, the Blable School District, the Osceola School District, I believe, are two of the districts that are going to be part of this district-wide team support, and so they'll be coming at different times through the year, and Dr. Janelle Keating will work directly with them and some other schools on that process. But the other support then is that the Carl Lewis Ridge Co-op Director is also going to be present, and potentially other superintendents in that co-op. So, there could be occasions where that co-op might have some additional meetings or additional supports. So, that, that's what we hope happens anyway, because then that will just strengthen the work that they're doing if they're, you know, in regular communication with each other.
So, if we email you, could we, could you set up an intro email? Like, I mean, I would go to a Springdale one without a problem.
Yes, and Dr. Wally will help facilitate that, but that absolutely, yeah, I think it would be. And, you know, and I think there's always the balance here, because being part of a collaborative team in this kind of setting, you know, there's vulnerability there, because you're coming together as professionals, you're, you have your student work, you're going through, you're talking about, you know, are we meeting our goals, where are we not meeting goals? And so, you know, there'll be situations and days where there are teachers who, you know, my kids are just not showing evidence of learning at the level they need to learn. We want teachers to always feel comfortable being able to have those conversations with each other. What I think our role is to be supportive of the process and the systems, and so I think there's this balance between, you know, being, being part and supporting the work, but also making sure they feel safe in being able to have collaborative meetings, but I think that's where the relationships that you form with your districts and, you know, be able to go in, and if they know you are wanting to learn so you can support them, they're going to be, be very happy with that.
And they are asked to have one school board member on their leadership team when they come to these meetings?
Yes.
So, that they'll have an understanding.
So, July 6th, do the meetings over here. This is where you're bringing groups of these systems.
Yeah, so the July 6th through 8th is the PLC Institute, so it's a, it's a conference, and it's offered to anybody in the United States. So, you're going to have people from all different states here. A lot of them, the majority of them are from Arkansas. So, this one, July 6th through 8th, has nothing to do with the list that's in front of you. That's two separate lists. That one's leading district-wide, but the one 6th through 8th is just a conference to learn more.
So, what's the one in September?
The September, the 26th or 28th, I'm sorry, I made that confusing. September the 26th and 28th is the list you have in front of you. And that will be their one R the other day, so like Springdale will be there either the 26th or 27th, not both.
Probably a good analogy would be July 6th through 8th is kind of like the revival. You're going to get the best of the whole experience, and it's that, it's that, that, yeah, that meeting that you have, you know, that lasts all week and everyone's, you know, excited, and then you're coming back in September to do the work, you know? So, that's kind of, yeah, that would be the difference there. But I'm telling you, you'll, there are speakers and just the experience, it's worth it.
Would the July 6th, 7th, and 8th have sessions that would be introductory sessions for us as beginners?
They absolutely will.
Okay, would they, maybe you have pinpoint days and times?
Maybe almost tailor, tailor some, you know, if you can only be here this day, come for this time.
I will, I'll go through and I'll, I'll put that agenda and pull out the ones that I think would best fit.
Are any sessions going to be on Zoom? And I always, I know I can't do the July dates, but I mean, I can already, I can calendar September now, but if there were portions that...
Probably not, they're probably not live streaming any of the July dates, so.
Thank you, Ms. Wally. We appreciate all that your team is good, and we are excited and we are looking forward to that number one ranking.
I'm looking forward to it too.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any, any other questions or reports or something that's popped into your mind that you would like to share? Ms. Dean? Check it out.
I would be remiss if I did not give honor or honors to the Family Community Engagement Task Force, but that will be a big test.
There we go, is that better? Okay. I would be, but I would be remiss if I didn't give honor or honors to, with the Family Community Engagement Task Force, as I said before, they did amazing work. But I did mention someone who was on the team from the very beginning, and that was Kim Wright. Kim Wright is not here anymore, but she was there at the very beginning when we first started this with Maria and Aurelio, but Kim Wright did a lot of work. She did a lot of work at the very beginning, and Gina Dickey was a part of that work as well. So, I just wanted to say that I appreciate the work that they did, the foundational work that got us to where we are today, and just wanted to give them their flowers, so appreciate it.
Anything else? All right, Ms. Post, you're up.
Dan, do you want me to click?
Probably, is that why you didn't go to your own face?
Okay. So, I wanted to start with this, because this is the picture I start all of my keynote speeches with, and the things going on in the mind behind that was just a little teacher from the alternative school. One of my homeschool students who became a photographer actually took this in my nana's backyard, and I just said, Sarah, I need a headshot for this application, not thinking it was ever going to be all over all kinds of things, but she did, she did a great job. So, yeah, it's just funny to think about the journey from that perspective. Just one of my homeschool kids helping me get a headshot for something that I truly did not think was going to happen, and yet, here we are. Okay, so another step back, I remember sitting at the Governor's Mansion. The regional finalists were all there, the top 12, and I was, so this was actually the next year, this was at Jessica's, but same cup. I was sitting in the very, very back. We had all come in masked, and I was so unprepared for my name to be called as one of the top four. My mask was off, and I was telling myself, be present, be present, just enjoy your fancy coffee, and that's what I was trying to do in that moment. And so, then the next year, when I was sitting at the front of the room about to speak and to honor Jessica, I looked... to honor Jessica, I looked down at that coffee cup and thought, oh, my goodness, what a journey it's been so far. That was the presentation of the final four. And I just wanted to point out, Dr. McDonald, Jenny McDonald, she's recently become superintendent in Russellville and has left Fort Smith, but I'm so grateful for her support. I will never forget kind of just discussing my insecurities about the application process. And here in a minute, you're going to see a list of everything that we actually submit. And she must have picked up on it because she said, Ms. Post, you need to understand something. We fully intend for you to win top four. And I said, oh, yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am. So that was her. And then Dr. Jones is to my right in the picture. He is now Director of Secondary Education for Fort Smith Public Schools, and I will be working with him now as secondary math coordinator for the district. This was the final four, and I don't know if it's lucky to be standing next to Johnny Key, but I feel like maybe it was, I don't know. But again, the thoughts in the brain behind that masked face, I just remember thinking, oh, my goodness, to have gotten to this point and thinking, again, thank you, God, for this privilege, and this is probably it. And I'm going to go home now and enjoy the extra cash I get to take with me and having no idea what was ahead. Okay, so so many people don't know about this, but I just wanted you to see what it is that we go through when we apply. So Jessica did this long ago. One of the first things that you do once you win is start picking your successor. So this is, this process is about to begin again. Teachers from across the state have submitted these things. So you have to submit evidence of engaging lessons. You have to talk about a school culture project or initiative that you have led within your building, ways that you have tried to involve the community with your school. You have to present what will be a major education issue that you feel passionate about, what your platform will be when you do speak. You have to create a video where you talk about one of those three topics. I picked Join the Greatest Profession. I remember seeing that and thinking, oh, yes, like, that is perfect for me. I can talk about this all day. And then, once all of those are submitted, four teachers are named state semifinalists, and then those four are observed and interviewed, and their principals are interviewed. And then whoever wins from that is announced at a surprise ceremony. This was my surprise ceremony. That was Mayor McGill and Joel, y'all remember Joel Lookadoo, and Commissioner Key and I. And that, I love that picture. A photographer had gotten that from back behind my shoulder where I was just looking down at it thinking, oh, my goodness, I can't believe this moment. And the family pride. This was nothing, Jessica, compared to the show that Cabot put on. But in my little town and my little alternative school, we sure were proud that day. And I don't know why it didn't come through, but that top left white square, I wish you could see it, it's a picture of, whoo, I'm not going to cry, my nana. She passed before I won, but it was her just looking down at the newspaper and seeing that I had made finalist. So maybe it's better that that didn't show up. First day, Ms. Dean, do you remember this moment? First day with state board. Okay, so this is what I always tell everyone is the best part of the gig. It's you're forever ATOY family. Someone asked me the other day if I'm a little envious of the Milken winners because they get a lot more money, and I said, no. We might not get as much in an award check, but we get our Arkansas Teacher of the Year family forever, and I wouldn't trade that. Just another little tidbit of information, when you become an Arkansas Teacher of the Year, it is one of the pathways to being designated as a master teacher. I think we've talked about that, but I wanted to make sure that was something that you all knew. Maybe, maybe not. Okay, this is a picture of me holding up the sign that I make my kids hold up on the first day of school. And it says, it's my first day of school. Susanna Post, at the time, 41 years old, and when I grow up, I want to be a doctor of education. But, yeah, I wish you could see it. I don't know why that didn't load. Okay, so I'm not going to lie, this, we were actually all resting on bar stools. And the Teacher of the Year from Kentucky is like a Google certified everything, and so he worked his magic and took the stools out of the picture. But that was, that was my team at Space Camp. Jessica, I cannot wait for you to get to go to Space Camp. My first, you do missions with your team, and my first mission was very stressful. I was in command control. And my second mission, all I had to do was extract DNA from a strawberry. So we did that pretty quickly, and then we were just goofing off and taking silly pictures. That is the entire National Teacher of the Year family from 2021. So again, the best part of this has been the family, the family of Teachers of the Year. I wish I could tell you all a story about every face, but truly, I look across that and I just think, oh, my gosh, I could go to Vermont, I could go down to Texas, I could go visit Juliana, our National Teacher of the Year in Vegas. I mean, it's, we, you know, it is such an incredible thing. Arkansas PBS Rise and Shine, that was one of the experiences that I didn't know was coming because it was kind of a new thing, and here we are about to, well, some of us have already, Jessica's already been in the studio, some of us have already recorded, but my dates are coming up in end of June. Okay, the Traveler's First Pitch, this is one of my favorite memories of the ATOY year. And if you look at the top right, that was, that was the pitch. It was lined up perfectly, it just didn't quite get there. And I think it's because I practiced for a couple of hours the day before, and I'll just say that it was difficult to sit down that day. I think I overdid it just a little. Okay, this was Washington Week. So to the left is my cohort, the 2021s, and to the right are the 2020s. I was so thankful for Senator Bozeman. He just made Joel and I feel so at home, and he gave us a tour. We went like down underground through the Capitol, and he knew the history of everything. So that was definitely a highlight. Another was just getting to give back. That's, everyone has their teacher bestie. That's my teacher bestie, we call her MJ. And through the College Football Playoff Foundation, we were each given a $100 Donors Choose gift card to give away, and she was teaching facts, family and consumer science, and spent so much money on food and material and just out of her own pocket to make sure that the kids are getting to do the things that she wants them to get to do. So she was the first face that popped into my mind to try to give back to. Okay, oh, that's a little bit off, too. I don't know why, y'all. And that was at the college football playoffs game in Indianapolis, and we were all honored on the field before the game. Okay. I don't know if you've seen the TikTok. But I know I've told you the story, now you get to see when I said I was incredibly excited. I mean, there are eyeballs hiding in that face, but I was not planning to be first. I mean, alphabetically, Arkansas should not have been first, but Alabama wasn't there, Arizona had COVID, I think. So when they said, Arkansas, you're the first one to try to throw the football, I said, no, I'm not, no, I'm not. And I was still trying to figure out, because I can play basketball, I was thinking, maybe I should do a chest pass, and then I thought, no. And I spiraled it, and y'all, it just went straight in that hole. And I was like a little kid in a candy store. Oh, and next to me, that's Sue from Vermont. So it was, we laugh, it was the Sue and Sue team that got it. Top left, Secretary Cardona, he was there quite a bit of the time that we were in Indianapolis. And then we all got to do a 5K together, that was fun. And that's my husband and I in the middle. Our little Heisman pose. And then, you can't really see it, but I'm pointing to my Razorback hat because I was so tired of hearing about the dogs and Roll Tide. This was just another chance to give back. Venus, the ATOY Coordinator, got to be there with me that day, and we just got to watch these little elementary kids' eyes get huge to know that they were all getting new bicycles. There we are, Dr. Rankin. Yep, that was during Love Teaching Week when my baby girl, Harper, and I hit the road, and we got to go down to Magnolia and spend some time, even eating lunch with you and hanging out. Yep, that was one of the highlights. These are just all my favorite moments. Okay, so I talked to you about Love Teaching Week, but I wanted you to get a visual of all the teachers and the places that were visited. So I can't see it from here, but I think it's like 18 or 19 hours of driving, lots of miles. But look at all those teachers that we got to celebrate. So Bethan, you were right there at the end, coming back up from Magnolia to Fort Smith. Definitely a highlight. I really appreciated Commissioner Key giving me this opportunity, knowing that I was from an alternative background. We got to go do a site visit together. That was a great day. To Ross, he, it was after one of these board meetings, and I said, I want to see some of the bright spots in the state, like, what are we doing in career and tech ed? And I mean, within, maybe before I even left this meeting, he had an itinerary, pick your schools. So I got to see some welding, a really cool aviation program, and then the picture in the middle are, it's like a robot competition ring. Educator Signing Day, I told the governor, I said, I just want one picture with you without masks on before this day is over. And he called his photographer over there, and we got that real quick, so I was thankful for that. And then over to the right with Carly and Venus and Edie, we all signed our commitment to education. That was the day that I got to speak at AAEAs Conference with Lynette Thrasher. She is definitely one that I've connected with during this year. This was a day, so Karen Norton, top right, is a former Arkansas Teacher of the Year, and she now works for Archford Co-op, and she brought me in. So top left, that's Archie, their therapy dog. And, I mean, after that day, y'all, I was sitting there, all the teachers were in the room, kind of gearing up for the presentation, and I was getting a little bit nervous because these were all teacher leaders, and there's another Arkansas Teacher of the Year in the room. And Archie comes over there, and I reached down and I pet him, and I thought, oh, this is working. And I kept petting Archie and petting Archie. And by the time I got up there, I thought, I'm not nervous at all. So maybe that's your next move, the state board, you need an Archie therapy dog. Okay, so when we talk about getting to go to Washington and getting to see this, that picture on the left, I think expresses our excitement, Ms. Newton, for the school that we were about to walk into and the magic that we were about to see. And then bottom right, those, I think some people had left, but that was pretty much our crew, our team, that got to go and see the PLC magic. Just recently, I got to go to Jacksonville, and it was part of CCSSO's SEET Collaborative, which is Systems to Elevate Excellent Teaching and/or Teachers. And that was with Sandra and Venus, and we got to present the work that Arkansas is doing, some of what y'all have seen and hear with just teacher residency model and the way that we are trying to kind of hook them in high school through the Intro to Ed classes and some of the others, and then keep them in the teaching field. And that was powerful. We talked a whole lot longer than we planned to because there were lots of questions from people across the state. So it's exciting to hear, like, California is coming to see what we're doing. It was exciting to go to Florida and present and have all these other states ask, what are you doing in Arkansas? And to be able to brag on our work. Okay, passing the baton to Jessica, this was the day that we had her surprise announcement. And I'm a hugger, and I'm glad she is, too, because I just grabbed her after I spoke. But I cannot say enough how excited I am that she's the one. Like I said, the greatest part of this ride, of this journey, has been the family. And once an ATOY, always an ATOY. So it's kind of a big responsibility to be picking like the new sibling in the group. Like, it's some pressure because there's such a chemistry and so much passion within the group, and she is going to fit perfectly. And I'm just so thrilled. I know y'all have all expressed how much you're going to miss me, but I promise you, you're going to love Jessica, you probably won't miss me at all. She's going to bring, I think, a very unique perspective. I've already seen the way through PBS and through Rise and Shine that she has worked to kind of incorporate diversity into who is on that camera. And it's not just the Teachers of the Year. Now we've got some children that might look a little different than what we would think of as a typical child because of her special education background. So I'm just so excited for the work that she's going to do and the diverse perspective that she's going to bring to you. And then that was a picture taken where I was talking about my journey to the classroom, and now somehow it's my journey beyond the classroom. So I think most of us talked about it at lunch, but my next step, which I've only known officially about for three days now, that I will be supporting math teachers and math in general at the district level for Fort Smith Public Schools as the secondary math coordinator. So I'm so excited about that work after being in Washington and seeing the importance of, I mean, we talk about equity, but until we get to what we saw where that data is student by student and standard by standard, and we're not just seeing them as an A or a B or a C or a D or an F, until we are seeing, oh, this is the gap that you're missing, let's take care of that and move on, to think that I'm going to get to come in and support that work at the district level in math, which is, you know, the one that we talk about so much. I was asked an interesting question because I'd been approached about math and/or literacy. And I said, well, literacy is fun, but math is my heartbeat. So that's probably the direction I'll want to go. And then someone said something interesting to me, and Weeda, I think you're going to love this. He said, if you had to choose between reading and math, and you could only have like one skill set, which one would you choose? And I said, well, I think I would have always said reading, but when I think about my husband's grandfather, he was illiterate. Very few people knew that. But I knew it, and so when he would get like a Christmas card, I would watch Grandma Post come over there and read it to him. Little things like that that, once I knew, I could pick up on. But he knew numbers, and he died a millionaire, and all he did was drive a school bus, and Grandma Post cooked for the school. And he passed away with millions. So I don't know. I don't know that I wouldn't choose math if I had to choose. So nothing to like downplay the importance of literacy, it is so critical. I think that the way I incorporated literacy instruction into my classroom as a math teacher is part of why I'm standing here today. But it is definitely my heartbeat, and I'm so thankful that's where my passion is going to continue to lead me. I think that's it. Yep. Oh, there it is. Yep, there it is. Yeah, top left, there's Nana, finding out that I had won for Fort Smith. And she was, I think, right at one, I think she had about four weeks left when she saw that. So that was really, really special. What an honor, y'all. I can't believe the year is up. I said, I'm not going to cry. I'm so blessed to know all of you and to have, to have been given the opportunity to see education from the 30,000-foot view and to know, because the department is such an abstract thing when your boot's on the ground. But to have walked these halls and to have had the conversations that I've had and to know your hearts and to know that we have such good people leading education in the state, I think that's why California wants to know what we're doing. And I think that's why we go to Florida and they want to hear about what we're doing. So please keep advocating for those that need it. And I've said this so many times, it is good to be the Teacher of the Year from Arkansas. Keep elevating teacher voice, invite Jessica into those conversations because she's got a lot of wisdom to offer. And I'm going to ask her to come up. Do you want to say something? So that I can calm myself?
Oh, gosh, you got me choked off. I think I, everything you were saying just resonated so deeply with me that I remember being at the governor's mansion, and I remember, I left my cell phone at home that day, but I remember Susanna saying, be present, like, put everything else aside. And I think that was just God working because I would have been on my phone texting and wanting to talk to my husband or friends, but I wasn't, I was completely present in that moment. And to leave there thinking, okay, I've made top four, I made top 12, it was enough, it truly was enough. But now, to know the possibilities, the possibilities. But now to know the possibilities, the work that is in front of me, the opportunity to continue what you've done and what all the other ATOYS have done to keep working through Arkansas, it is such a privilege and it is such an honor. And I, you've got big shoes to fill. And you've done this with such poise and such grace and you've been a friend to me. And I can't wait to pull up on your work. And it's just an honor, it's an honor I could never have imagined. I failed out of college my first year. My parents never gave up on me, even when I'd given up on myself. And to go back to school and finish and finish with the top grades I could have and to be changing Arkansas from this platform is just something I never envisioned 15, 20 years ago. So it's an honor and it's a privilege and I cannot wait to work with you and for you, serving Arkansas. Thank you.
I told you all you're going to love her. Okay, one more person, Venus Torrance, will you come up here? You stay up here with us.
Yes.
This is our rock. So I just want to make sure you understand that she is the one. She's the one that keeps us together, that when we're nervous about speeches, tells us that we are so much better than we are. You at least make us believe it.
I'm so done. I was trying to cry in peace. But it's been a great year, you've been absolutely, absolutely phenomenal, Susanna. Your heart just, it shines through on everything you do. Every time I see you, it's just, you just have this warm aura around you. And I miss that. You've got one too. But I'm going to miss hers. Here you go. All right.
Thank you both ladies. Don't do that.
Okay, so one very last thing I just want to mention, at the top of that list of schools that you were given is Fort Smith. And we do have model PLCs that you can come see at the elementary level. I don't know about the middle school level yet. I know at the high school level, you can come visit Northside High School. I would be more than happy to give you a personal tour of any of that. But I don't want to lose connection, so please come visit Fort Smith anytime that you can. And I look forward to seeing y'all again sometime in the future. Thank you.
Secretary Key, I think you're glad you don't have to follow that. Great job, Susanna. You have been an outstanding representative for Arkansas and Arkansas teachers. I know y'all felt the same way as I did whenever I was selected. You thought that I'm just a regular teacher, somebody else needs to do this job. But you have shown, and I know Jessica will, that you're supposed to be where you're at. And so we appreciate all that you've done and all that you're going to continue to do. So we thank you for that. Ms. Frino, do we have any public comments today? No public comments. So with that, Mr. Sutton.
Being that there's no further business, I guess I'll move adjourned.
All right. Mr. Henderson? All right. We are adjourned. Thank you.